Calling to order the Needham Select Board meeting for November 14th. The first item on the agenda is public comment. I've not been notified of any public comments. Joe, you have a letter. Do you want to come forward and just talk about it for a second? You have a letter that will be included with the materials of the meeting as part of public comment.
But you know, some of the comments, or I can deviate slightly.
So you have three minutes to make some comment.
So first, Joe Matthews, 31 Rosemary Street. So I'm addressing the select board, but really it's just everyone in town and also really our town meeting members as well. This past July, I presented to the planning board regarding bylaws for new construction in the single residence B zones. In my opinion, the current bylaws are not effective in attending their stated objectives. And over the summer, I've done a lot of research about the process and the work that went into setting these bylaws. And nowadays we have the YouTube so we can go back and review the all the town town government materials. This was from May 2017. It's actually on the Needham channel website for anyone that wants to review. And I think it can be really informative. At the time, the proponents of the changes said that the zoning bylaw amendments were intended to address concerns with demolition of existing smaller homes being replaced with larger homes and existing neighborhoods and the loss of neighborhood character, which is occurring as a result of this conversion process. Most of the people who I've made aware of this issue, well, it's I don't ever really make them aware of it. Because at this point, discussion for a lot of people, and I think in some, you know, those objectives were not met by the changes. When I spoke with the planning board, they said that due to their busy schedule, they might not be able to get to this until really, you know, the latter half of the next session, so first half of 2025 with an eye towards the October 2025 town meeting. And I really think that we owe it to people in town to address this on a faster timetable, especially because this really isn't something new. We're going, we have to go back and fix what, you know, we failed to do. And I think people who the town meeting members and the plan was like, but had good expectations that a difference could be made, but we just didn't get there. I received a letter from a resident, you know, supporting this effort, talked to other people. I know in the in the packet, there's another person who's dealing with oversized construction on an abutting property. So very much top of mind. And so, yeah, I just want to, you know, let people know and let you guys know that, you know, you might not be involved with it directly because you're on the planning board, but it's something that I think we got to move forward with pretty quickly. Thanks.
Any other comments? Emily, is there anybody online? Okay, thank you so much. Then the first order of business is a public hearing, a grant of location for EverSource at 920 South Street. If Ms. Calendar is here. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Joanne. How are you?
Very well, yourself?
Good. So the first grant of location is for 920 South Street, if you want to bring that one first.
That is correct. So EverSource is seeking a grand location to install approximately 45 feet of conduit into South Street. And this is to provide service to two new homes at that location.
Okay. And, um, Ms. Fitzpatrick, is everything in order?
Yes, and no work has been done.
Thank you. It is a public hearing. I don't know if there's any members of the public here tonight to speak on this matter. All right. Any questions from the board?
Yes, actually.
All right, Mr. King.
You know, in the DPW worksheet, it says, plan denotes that there will be a minimum clearance of 18 inches when crossing utilities in the street. I'm wondering if they meant feet, but they use the double prime inch mark. And I've seen spinal tap enough to know that there's a difference between feet and inches when written with a double prime and single prime notes. So can we get clarification? Are we talking about 18 inches over the street or 18 feet?
I imagine it's 18 inches, but I will confirm.
It says 18 inches.
From existing utilities.
Okay. What's that mean?
Actually, not 18 feet.
Okay, all right. I went missing over the street, so I didn't know we're talking about a limbo stick or what. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just ask for a little clarification? It says it's a two lot residential development. It's only got one address, the street address. And just is this two, like two family, a two family building? Or is this two separate, single family dwellings on one lot? How is this working?
Yeah, they're two separate dwellings. And my understanding is that it's going to be a new private way known as River Run Road. Once I guess it's all said and done.
Ah, okay. So then we'll be getting a separate notice for the renaming or the creation of that road and the house numbers. Yeah.
So that happens.
They'll have to go through a process.
Okay. Fine, good to me.
Any other questions?
I'm just wondering for the director of public, I assume this is an underground connection. Is that correct? So the 18 inches would make sense. It would be 18 inches above away from another utility in the street, not above ground. Is that right?
Yes.
I'm interpreting for you.
Okay. If there's no other questions, I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the board select, the select board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately 45 feet of conduit in South Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Four zero. Okay, the second public hearing is 52 LaSalle Road. Ms. Calendar, you want to?
Absolutely. So EverSource is seeking a grand location to install approximately eight feet of conduit into LaSalle Road. And that is to provide underground electric service to the new home of 52 LaSalle Road.
Okay. And Ms. Fitzpatrick, is everything in order?
Yes.
And are there any questions from the board?
Yeah.
Mr. King?
You know, just a comment. I know we've looked into the feasibility of putting electric wiring underground. And this is a case where this would be a way to do a part of that if ever we would decide we want to pursue this. But had this, if this house were to bury their utilities, the next time there's a house built, the next year, I wonder if they could. So it's just an example, I just wanted to.
They're putting it underground.
They are, yes.
Yeah.
So will we, I mean, it'd be a piecemeal approach, but had we required all people to put this in as sort of an overall strategy, would we arrive at buried cable?
We'd arrive at the service lines at least, but not the distribution lines. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
It's certainly an option you can talk about.
Um, it is a public hearing, so I don't know if there's anybody in the room with a question or anybody online. If there's no further questions, I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I move that the select board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately eight feet of conduit in LaSalle Road. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Four zero. Thank you. That brings us to our public hearing for the RTS rate setting. So I know we have a number of people here today who are all going to come up, I'm sure, and join us here at this table. So our whole row here. Dave, Charis, Cecilia, Matt. Jeff? Practically clearing the room. All right. So I want to thank all of you for coming back this evening. I know that we saw you, assuming the summer, late in the summer, in September. I don't remember when, August, okay, it was in the summer. So in August and took sort of a first round at this, had some questions. Appreciate your going back to relook at this and bring back a new proposal for implementation. And so with that, I will turn it over to, are you starting?
I would ask that DPW Director go to the PowerPoint first. It'll help answer a lot of the questions.
Great.
Thank you. So I think after we had the initial consultation and was asked to go back to the solid waste recycling advisory committee to have a discussion about the fees, we decided that we really needed to start from the beginning of how we got where we were and why we have the fees that we have. Because I think when you just sort of talk about the fees in a vacuum, you sort of lose the why and what those fees actually do. When you look at the increases, you have to really look at them in context. So I'm hoping this helps provide a little bit of context. I'm sure some of it you are already familiar with. One of the questions that came up, and we talked about this, is that it's been over 10 years since we had fee increases for the commercial tipping rate. So something very unusual happened in 2014. The town had the ability to renegotiate a contract that it had for the incinerator facility in Millbury. The center incinerator was going for sale. The communities that participated in the consortium with Needham had an opt out of option after 10 years of the contract. And I think we're about eight years into the contract at that point. And so the company wanted to secure all of their long term contracts as part of their sale and so had some significant incentive to negotiate with the towns and at a very favorable rate. And what we saw in 2014, which almost never happens, is that the tipping fee actually went down for the town of Needham by 15%. So the current tipping fee in 2024 is the first time that the tipping fee is matched what our 2013 rate was. So for that 10 year period, we had a reduction and a slow increase. It's all indexed, but it didn't actually get to the same rate that we had in 2013 until this year. So when we're looking at our costs versus our expenses, we didn't have an incentive to look at the commercial fee because our costs actually decreased, at least for the tipping fee during that period of time. In 2019, we started seeing increases in our cost of processed trash. The tipping fee was going up closer to that 2013 range, as well as our staffing having received increases for cost of living and steps during that period. And we started having those conversations about whether or not we needed to look at an increase. And then COVID happened. So we sort of had a conversation during 2020 that we were going to do a pause on some of our fee increases, knowing that a lot of our local businesses had a lot of other challenges that they were dealing with. In 2021, as we were sort of reopening the RTS in some ways, the RTS was open fully during COVID, but we actually dialed back some operations, including some of the over the scale work. We saw a significant increase in our commercial use. And that was also well timed out with a private facility that was in Dedham closing and now becoming one of the more regional tipping facilities for commercial haul, for commercial operations. So that's why for 10 years, we didn't look at increasing the rate. And what has happened over the past couple of years, as well as some concerns that we have moving forward, is why we're looking at increasing the rate at this particular time.
Charis, can I interrupt and just ask, where are those commercial operators coming from? As I understand it, they're not the other trash collectors in town, the big end. So where are they coming from?
So there are trash companies in Needham. There are also neighboring communities that support these and they do their business in Needham. So it's a combination. And what we're noticing about the the commercial, kind of the bulky commercial side, is that those businesses operate throughout multiple towns. So it's really hard to track where the material is coming from. And so a lot of what Charis is going to talk about is what is like Needham specific trash and sort of needs to be addressed that way? What's kind of a regional kind of trash?
Okay. So the types of trash, and Matt can just add, but we have, you know, residential MSW that we receive. We have commercial entities, so businesses that come and drop off their trash there. We have construction companies, I imagine that's quite a bit of it. And then John Callers is another, you know, clean outs is another one that uses it. Did I miss any? Um, so the purpose of the increase is because of the pressure that we have on our facility, we want to kind of either do one of two things. We either want to make sure that what we're charging supports our ability to provide the service. And if we continue to see an influx in trash, we may have to have a conversation about staffing levels at the facility. Or we want to discourage people from using our facility as the cheapest point in the area. And again, a lot of these companies will factor in tipping fee plus gas. And so if we are close by and we're the cheapest, we're where they're going to go. If there are other entities that are less expensive than us and they're a little bit further away, they're going to do a calculation on what the gas costs them. So we still might be attractive because of our location, but we won't be as attractive because we are the lowest option, the lowest priced option. The other thing that we are looking at in DPW more broadly is preparing for a potential significant increase in MSW costs in 2028.
Say what MSW is for the public.
Municipal solid waste.
Yes.
So the materials that we produce and then we send out, not recycling, not other products, but really trash. We currently have a contract that is in place, as I said, a very favorable contact through 2028. There are some market conditions that Matt has been talking about with us for a very long time to prepare us for that make us believe that we are going to see a significant increase in that renegotiation, whether we choose to go with the current vendor or a different solution. And then I also believe some of our, the town's climate goals are also going to influence that. A lot of the trash right now, they're not building new incinerators in the area and they're not opening up new landfills in the area, which means that our trash gets, has to get hauled out of here usually by rail to Ohio, New York. And then now even some of those are closing off and it's like Alabama, other places that, you know, are willing to take our trash, but we have to get it there. And so we may have to pay a premium in order to deal with our trash locally, thinking about carbon cycling, or we would potentially accept sort of a higher carbon load in order to send it out of state. So those are the things.
At this point, none of our trash is going out of state. Nothing is going off to Ohio or to Alabama. But that is sort of the way these companies are looking towards the future. Right now, I think the easiest thing for them to process in their incinerators is, is the household trash that we are sending them. But as our load increases, and Charis is going to show you the waste characterization, as it goes to more of that commercial stream, that's the type of material that will start heading out on rail.
So we're starting those conversations. We're reaching out to the communities that started the negotiations. Almost everybody has changed positions in that period of time. So we're just getting names, communication, and we're going to basically figure out what role Needham will play as part of that communication. And again, we as a collective group, we're going to have to decide if we all have the same common goal or do we have different goals? And how does that break out as we think about what our trash looks like in the future? I think when we've talked about it in the past, the goals of the state were really to reduce trash. And so they really provided very few options for disposal. And unfortunately, we haven't seen a significant reduction in trash that we had hoped. So we're not seeing, we still need a place for this to go. So we know that we have a new contract coming and we have a fairly significant indicators in the market that there's going to be a significant increase in tipping fee. So we had conversations about how quickly do you increase fees for commercial? We're going to be having those conversations for bags and other services we provide. So we thought that now is also a good time to start phasing the commercial rate up, knowing that it will increase even more so when we have a new contract in place. And the other thing we had a conversation about was what is the function of the RTS? Like, why does the town run a facility? And the main reason the town runs a facility is to service the people who live and work in the community, right? It's not to provide a regional service or it's not to necessarily make revenue. It's really to provide the service of waste removal. So we wanted to ensure that we continue to focus on our primary mission, which is serving the community and providing additional services like to the commercial entities, but doing so at a fair market rate and not doing it at the expense of our, our current tax levy. So one of the things we looked at, at when we got the feedback from the community was how could we break out the traditional backdoor service that people receive for trash removal in town from the other commercial entities that come? And Matt worked with his staff and really evaluated that they could provide separate rate for just backdoor haulers for those weekly collections. It's a pretty reliable, consistent amount of trash that they're receiving. And we'll see on the next slide what the ratio of that is to our general waste stream. And we're able to really visually tell that that is household waste and not from, coming from other communities. There's not really a main incentive for them to collect from other communities and, and get rid of their waste in Needham. What we did determine though, is that we couldn't do it by the name of those entities. So we have, I think, three?
Four.
Four in town. They do also provide other services for other community members, whether it's in Needham or outside of Needham for larger collections, so junk removal, that sort of thing. We decided that that would stay at the higher rate and the lower rate would simply be for that backdoor weekly service. Just because we can't very easily tell if that trash, you know, if someone's doing a junk haul out, is it coming from Wellesley, is it coming from Needham, is it coming from Dedham? So we didn't think that that would be fair to offer that preferential rate. I think we heard and we looked at the information that was provided to select board that the primary area of concern was for those weekly payers who were providing the backdoor service. So that's where we focused our tiering out on. And then in the next slide, you'll just see, or the one after that, there's a chart and it just shows what our majority of our waste is. So back to our primary mission, if our primary mission is to serve the residents of Needham, it's really those two categories of Needham pickup and residential. Whereas you can see the vast majority of the waste that's being processed at the facility is commercial. So we wanted to make sure that we were collecting the appropriate revenue from those commercial entities and making sure that we can continue to provide good service.
So that green there is sort of the bulky commercial. That doesn't mean that it's not from Needham. So if you were knocking down a shed in your backyard, that could be in that green. But it could also be from Newton or Waltham. And it's, it's not something we can track. So that's, I think.
Have like a separate drop off location for the stuff versus like for these haulers?
It's all going to go into the building. It's only, it's actually even specific trucks are going to be allowed to dump at the backdoor collection rate. And that's, you know, you can see it as it tips off the truck that it's bags. It's usually kind of wet and, and well, but it is, it's, it's a certain style of trash. Whereas like, if you see, if you see a bunch of like. But if you see like, you know, lumber and that sort of thing.
So Matt also did an analysis of the pays you throw bags and tried to calculate out what the cost someone was paying for a ton of trash. It's hard to, you know, we charge by the gallon. So it ended up being about, right now, our current fee is 140 a ton for over the scale for the commercial and then 138 a ton for the residential. So pretty close. Again, if our primary service model is to deliver to the residents, we want to have more of a differential between our commercial rate and our residential rate.
I actually found that number fascinating because that's comparing to a current over the scale rate that people are paying of what, 77, 78 or something like that? Is that it?
For the tipping fee?
For the tipping fee right now, so.
That doesn't factor in any of our processing.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, so the three options we provided for consideration to the solid waste advisory, recycling advisory committee. One was the original proposal that we made, which was raising all the rates to 200. One was a phased in approach with a 10% increase over six months. So one to be implemented in January 1st and one to be implemented in July 1st. The second was a 15% increase. And the third was a tiered rate, starting at 160 for Needham pickup and 180 for all others. And then going to 180 for Needham pickup and 220 for all others. And we had a pretty robust conversation, a few of these went out multiple years, about not committing ourselves beyond July of '24, knowing that we'll be further into negotiations and conversation about a new MSW rate. And we really want to take those dollar values into effect before we fix the rate at any particular percentage because it may need to go up beyond 10 or 15%. And we did have a conversation that we would in each spring reevaluate the rate structure to make sure that we are continuing to increase it on a periodic basis and not allowing it to lapse for 10 years as we have. The committee unanimous, I provided also some revenue projections if we were to implement all three plans. And the committee unanimously adopted, endorsed option three, which was to provide 160 a ton for the Needham weekly pickup service, 180 for bulky and commercial. And then that would increase on July 1st of 2024 and then would be reevaluated for July 1st of 2025. We really felt like the Needham weekly service was such a small percentage of the overall revenue and the overall service collected to the town, that it made sense that we could separate it from the general commercial waste stream. And we felt like creating a percentage might create a false sense of inflation to the customer, thinking that it's going to only go up a certain percent per year. So that is sort of where we were and where we are. And if you have any questions, I'm sure about the committee's process, we'd love to answer them.
I have a question. So this is really a very impressive analysis. I am curious, what is it that makes a hauler a Needham hauler? Is it the location of their business? Is it the number of clients that they have? I guess on, this might be more trouble than it's worth. Perhaps I'm like, you know, over, overthinking things. But like, how do you, how do, and what happens if a hauler decides to pick up one Needham client? They pass their, pick up their trash and then head to our dump?
So the haulers have to register with the affectionately.
I love the dump. Yeah, it is affectionate.
The haulers that we have in town are required to register with the Board of Health as part of their permitting process. And part of that, they list the clients that they have. The reality is the larger costs, the larger collection companies that are coming into Needham, the sort of so called front door services, they have their own facilities that they go to where they process their own waste. So we would be looking at the information that they provide the Board of Health to verify. They have the number of customers they have in Needham as part of that service.
And I'm not sure that I am understanding the distinction between a front door hauler and a backdoor hauler. So can you tidy that up for me?
So I guess somewhat from my knowledge and history in the town.
This is a historical question.
Yeah, so it was a practice, not a rule, that people in town did not deposit their trash on the front of their properties. They didn't have barrels outside, it was unsightly. So there was sort of this unwritten rule that if you wanted to have pickup, you had to have it where they would back into your driveway and pick it up at the end of your driveway. And so the four firms that we have left in town are really that old school, traditional model where they're providing service sort of from the back of the driveway. It's a more manually intensive process. And then you have newer vendors that have come in who now put the little totes out like you would in a community that provides curbside.
And they just drive down the street. And they drive down the street. These are the ones with the.
These are, right.
The machines.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So the bigger.
And those vendors do not come to Needham. Most of them right now, Wind Waste just purchased Orifice.
Yep.
And they have their own transfer stations and processing plants.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
What are the four? So JT Trash. Junk Removers does a collection and Dalton Disposal and Needham Recycling. And one of the issues that we have is that a lot of these companies that supply services in Needham have been Needham companies, Needham residents, but a lot of times they move out of town, even though the side of their vehicle might say, you don't have a Needham phone number on it. But they've moved to Norwood or they've moved to Waltham. So it is difficult to find out where trash is coming from. And then it's much more difficult to find out whether they're doing the service in Needham for Needham residents, which we want to support, or if they're picking up one item in Needham and then going off to High Park, Rosendale. Turn it back because our rates are low.
So this will make our rates on par generally.
Yes.
So the Needham backdoor haulers rate will still be preferable.
It'll be a lower rate.
But, but the other rate will be more on a par.
Do we make revenue from commercial stuff?
And we make money, but this is not, is it a moneymaker or?
It's been so low.
Right, so.
So I think I have to do a much more in-depth analysis. And it really depends on what you talk, like we, when you talk about the capital investment of the facility, when you talk about the staff of the facility, I'd really have to pull it in. We divested ourselves of an enterprise fund because we were no longer making sufficient revenue in order to offset it. I don't think, from my experience in town, the majority of the enterprise fund, it was my tenure, when it was functioning, was really off the back of the recycling market. And when the recycling market crashed, that's why the enterprise fund no longer stood on its own. So I don't know if commercials ever been revenue generating. I think our goal is really to have it somewhat cash positive or revenue neutral. But we are doing an RTS study, which we are hoping to start very shortly. And I think that will give us some more information about not only our operating costs, but some of the capital investment that we need to make and what that, what that looks like.
Right. But you're right, the RTS is to serve residents and business in town, not to. But you're right, the RTS is to serve residents and business in town, not to. That's not its mission. But I think you guys threaded the needle pretty well. Cause I was concerned with a lot of haulers in town. That this is a too fast increase. I think he has. It's amazing. Thank you.
I wanna, I'll say, you know, the, um, the committee, uh, deliberated long and hard and so were strongly sensitive to the sticker shock, you know, the, you know, that we were faced in the, over the summer. Alright, so there was a lot of strong advocacy for, um, you know, giving, uh, you know, residents a break, you know, extending this. But you know, when faced with, you know, uh, stragging it out and we did it over those years, then we're faced with another large increase, you know, when, um, when, when the contract changes. It took us two weeks, actually. We couldn't come to consensus in the, in the first week and met again another, in another two weeks to be ready for, for, for this. But they did, they did a great job in, in processing, you know, all of the, uh, the facets of that, that decision.
Yeah, please thank them. This is great.
Charis, what other communities are involved like we are in this renegotiation of the contract? Other communities around us who will be seeing the same increases? That's what I'm trying to understand, that like the playing field around us. Is everybody?
So many of the communities around us, um, we were having a debate about whether or not Dedham was in it because they weren't part of the original group. And apparently there's multiple tiering out of when people joined and preferential, um, tipping fees and some pay a little bit more because they join later. Um, but I know Walpole is in it, Dedham is in it.
Newton, Newton's one of the big ones. Worcester's another big one. Make sure it's very, but like small ones too, like, like Milbury and like, or even smaller ones. There's a lot of small communities, so.
I think it's eighteen communities.
Twenty seven. Wellesley does their own, um, they have their own negotiation. They have a person dedicated at their RTS who does spot sales of all their recycling. And MSW, so. There may be more communities also interested in joining. So we're gonna start those. We've heard from, uh, Wellesley, Farmingham, a few other communities that may be interested in joining the consortium. So we want to start the conversation with the original group first and make sure that we're all on the same page before we have a conversation about opening it up. Because we want to make sure that our space, if we choose to go internally to Massachusetts, that our space is reserved and we're not growing too large to be able to be accommodated at one facility.
All of this is important. I mean, the idea of having our trash hauled to Alabama just kind of blows my mind. So, um, yeah.
One last question, um, do, do, um,
That's just as I say that, I'm just, I've just completely lost it. Oh, do you have the, the resources? Like it seems like, I mean, are you gonna have to police this in some fashion?
E- everything about the transfer station has to be monitored and policed. We have a person who's dedicated at the scale, who has eyes on the building. As, as the trucks come in and they're all small or they tend to be smaller trucks. So you can see literally what comes off the back of it. And if there's a problem, you can get it pretty quickly. So if a, a, a traditional backdoor hauler comes in and they've included commercial debris on top of that, they're gonna get billed at the higher rate. It automatically is gonna escalate to the higher rate. And there's also due to the repetitive nature of these, these companies coming in, we know who they are. And if they jeopardize their relationship with us and we start to have to scrutinize what they're doing, that's not a favorable outcome for them. Cause then we're gonna, we're gonna be on them for everything.
And you can tell Needham trashed.
Apparently not, it's very wet.
I had a couple of questions. These are things you've said, I think, that I just want to make sure that I understand. So the, the backdoor haulers. Did I hear correctly that you guys have seen their customer lists? Because I mean, how do you know that they're picking up mostly in Needham? Was that through the Board of Health?
Supply that through the Board of. And I mean, I don't think typically it makes, m- most of the neighboring communities either have the curbside or a facility. You know, I, I suppose it would be possible for them to pick up one or two, uh, like over to Wellesley if they were down in Grove Street. But I, I don't think that's.
Okay, but they, the understanding is they're local businesses that are picking up locally. And then the second thing is just so I understand that when we renegotiate with this consortium, we are expecting an increase. And so this July first, twenty twenty four, it won't last all that long. At some point, it, it'll probably have to go up.
So the new contract, or the contract we currently have right now is set to expire July first of twenty twenty eight. So we have some time, but in the world of municipal negotiations, trying to work with twenty seven different cities and towns. We're almost behind, I think, when we think about it. So we'll have a pretty good idea of where we're going a year or two before we get there, just because of how complicated this process is gonna be.
But just time wise, we're not talking about then on December thirty first of twenty twenty four, raising again, right?
We're looking at a July first model.
But some years after that, or you don't know?
My instinct is that we'll probably be increasing it July one of twenty twenty five and whether it's a small minor increase of a few dollars or if it's larger.
That would be a time to look at it on a regular basis, July of every year.
We talked about, you know, the, the ten years, you know, and, um, you know, I, I assume some responsibility for the committee, you know, we are advisory committee and we had just as much responsibility. We met over COVID, um, you know, regularly with, with the budget. So we could have asked questions in regards to, you know, long-term planning around that rate. So, um, the committee is also, um, in this discussion is prepared for in- increasing the rates, you know, continually annually. So it doesn't, we don't get the shock value again.
Well, and I would guess that a number of the haulers have not gone without rate increases throughout the last ten years, that there have been rate increases for their clients. Presumably, I, I understand they have labor costs that have gone up and other things, but it's just that this particular cost has not changed as a component of their pricing for all this period of time.
Yeah, I, uh, there seems to be a little confusion amongst the haulers. I've talked to some people and one guy said, Arvut has been sold several times. I don't know who hauls our trash anymore. I don't even know what day they show up. So, so it seems like there's a lot of confusion out there.
There are people who put barrels out, they stay out for a while, so that might explain it. So I appreciate all this. So the process now going forward is, this is our public hearing. People are welcome. Any more questions from the board? Or are we ready to open it up if there's questions from the public? Okay. Is there anybody here in the room who would like to ask a question? First question? And is there anybody online? Who has a question? Thank you. If there's no hands, then, um, the process going forward is, I'm trying to remember from the memo.
The vote is scheduled for the fifth.
For the fifth.
Twenty eight, sorry. I, I was ahead of Thanksgiving, you.
So at our next meeting. Alright, so there will still be an opportunity for public comment. People can write to selectboard@needhamma.gov. We're welcome, you know, happy to take your feedback on this proposal, but it will come back for a vote at our next meeting. Based on what we've heard this evening. Any last thoughts from the group? Dave, do you want to say anything here? You're the sage on the side here.
You heard the, uh, the process of why we, we are having to raise the rates. And, um, probably be on a more frequent, um, consideration of, of raising the rates.
Frequency is not the right word, right? I think we're trying to move our reviews of rates to a more regular basis.
Well, comparing ten years.
Yes.
To maybe every other year.
More regular. Yep. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate all the work. I greatly appreciate the new proposal. I think it accomplishes what we, what we asked.
Matt, I have one other question for you while you're here. Since I'm always asking you recycling questions and I want to say publicly that I'm grateful for your answering my million and one recycling questions. Have we had you do a session like with the Needham channel, like sitting down with things, talking through them, what can be recycled, what can't, like maybe showing objects? Maybe we could.
We did a forum up at the library, but yeah.
Maybe we work and we create a video.
We had, yeah, we had a nice.
You shall, if you're listening, I'm in with Matt. We'll do a video.
Love the idea of pulling up the box water.
Right.
Yes or no?
All the different things.
Madam Chair, I, can we move the appointment calendar and consent agenda?
I'd love that. Where's the second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Four zero, that is approved. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the application for a change of manager for an all alcohol licensed Needham lending company doing business as Sheraton Boston Needham Hotel. Brian McGrath. The proposed manager of record. Right on time. Hardly ever happens. As it should be. Alright, Brian, do you want to, uh, start by telling us a little bit about your background and what brings you now to the Sheraton?
Sure. Um, I've been in the hospitality industry for all my life. I started when I was thirteen years old, uh, worked my way up through the ranks. Most recently, I've been with Stepstone Hospitality and that's the management company that manages the Sheraton, uh, Needham Hotel. I was the regional vice president of operations overseeing, uh, ten hotels across the country. And decided it was time to get off the road, uh, when there was a change in management at this hotel. It was a great opportunity for me to be home every night. And, uh, not have to fly anywhere, which is a wonderful thing. I've done, uh, multiple GM roles, uh, in the past. I was in downtown Boston at the Ames Boston Hotel. Uh, for three years. I was at Hilton Dedham for, uh, two years. I was out in Western Mass, Springfield area. It was actually in Connecticut, but lived in, in Western Mass. And had worked resort life, uh, down on Cape Cod for fourteen years of my, my life as well. So been in hospitality one fashion or another, um, uh, and in a managerial role, quite honestly, for the last thirty years. Across all aspects of hospitality, uh, food and beverage, as well as a general manager. So, great opportunity to run a hotel. I was here when we reopened the hotel. I was actually the regional vice president over the hotel when we reopened it. Brought it back to life after being closed for the year and a half. Did the renovation, uh, as well. I was actively involved in, in the, the rebuild and renovation of the asset. And, um, happy to have a home.
And how is it doing these days?
We're doing very well.
Good.
Very well. Uh, we're seeing a lot of pickup. Um, happy to say we've also, uh, in September, there was a, a, uh, shopping group that came in from the town that came to our bar and we refused to serve, which was wonderful to see that my systems are in play and things are working correctly. So, but the business is strong. Um, we're seeing a lot of positives, uh, from the transient side. The BT side is still a little short, uh, business transient traveler. Uh, they're, they're still not all back in their offices, but we're seeing a lot of corporate, uh, corporate group business as well as, you know, between all the universities and the SMF business, the social business is, is doing very well.
So you do know, because you, you have talked to us before, that, um, your alcohol license and how it's handled is very important to this board. And, um, not coming before us with a violation is our priority and we hope it's your priority as well. Since you reopened, we have done, made some changes to our regulations, um, that, that I'm sure have been conveyed. But the need for really checking all licenses under the age of forty and.
And I just went to the TIPS training here, uh, on, on, at the town hall a couple of weeks ago. I did pass. They've screwed up. They, they screwed up with my, uh, first name. I'm now B R I G Z, which I don't know how they got that, but, uh, working with the TIPS organization to get that.
Great, excellent. And have all your servers been trained?
They have. Even my catering team that, that deals with events is also trained in TIPS.
And scanners too, right? Lights and scanners, digital readers.
We don't have that at the hotel.
Okay.
At this point, but I can look into that, absolutely.
So that actually is part of our new regulations, that you would have that automatically, so that licenses can be scanned. Any other questions?
I just wanted to, to bring up the topic of, of the fact that, well, in my experience, people tend to act a little differently when they go to a place where they're staying, their, their drinking and partying behaviors are maybe a little bit more exaggerated. And I think, um, something that concerns me and that I would like to know that you have your eye on is the, the idea of holiday parties or prom parties or birthday parties where you have guests staying in the hotel who maybe are underage or there's some combination because, um, I think this can often be a situation, you know, that is different than many of our establishments in town that serve alcohol. And that would be something that I would just, I'd be interested to know how you might deal with a situation like that because that's something that I've heard of happening before and, and getting out of control. So.
So a- again, all our bartenders, even banquet bartenders are tip certified. But, you know, in a hotel, a different situation, you know, where there's guest rooms, there's lobby space, there's a lot of, uh, public space that, that guests can go to the room, grab an alcoholic beverage, bring it down. We escort them, you know, unfortunately this is public space, but it's not, it's still under our liquor license. And it's our responsibility to ensure that you take that back to your room and you can't have it in the public, public space. So that's really our stance, um, as a company, uh, you know, to, to manage that process and hold people, you know, legal, uh, age folks that have alcohol, because it happened, I'll give you a great example that, you know, a hockey event or a soccer event where people are coming from New Jersey, New York, they'll come in, they'll bring a twelve pack and then they'll come down to the lobby and we immediately turn them around and say, you have to go back to your room with that or you have to discard it. You can't be in the lobby with that.
Okay, thank you. And I think you were asking more maybe about event types of things, like a holiday party situation. And you mentioned that your catering staff are trained.
Correct. They're all tip certified, as well as my sales staff is certified. Anybody that touches alcohol in the hotel is certified.
We appreciate that. Alright, if there are no more questions, I would welcome a motion. Actually, I should probably check with Miles and say, Miles, is everything in order? No, is Emily, is Emily checking this now? Thank you, Emily. Um, now I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I moved at the Select Board as Liquor Licensing Authority, approve and sign an application for a change of manager to Brian McGrath for Sheraton Boston Needham Hotel, one hundred Cabot Street, Needham. And to forward this application to the A, B, C, C for approval.
Second.
Last chance for questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Or zero? Keep your feet on the ground. Thank you. Alright, uh, staying on time, uh, maybe even a moment ahead of time. We welcome, uh, Tim McDonald and the staff from Health and Human Services on the Healthy Aging Assessment and Community Health Assessment.
Welcome.
Welcome. Would you like? Tim, who's up first?
Tiffany.
Here we go.
I think for the most part, you guys all know, maybe I'll introduce myself again. Tiffany Bonoit, uh, Assistant Director of Public Health. Specifically overseeing the nursing and substance use prevention, that's a hope promotion. And guys, enough Tim. And Julie, um, she is our data analyst epidemiologist who, uh, did a lot of awesome work and has raised the bar for public health, for Needham Public Health a hundredfold. So. Let you introduce yourself.
So I, I believe that I have met most of you. Um, I'm Julie McCarthy. I'm the, I've been working in the division for a couple of years now as the epidemiologist. I'm gonna be talking today about, uh, a healthy aging assessment and the community health assessment, which. I'm going to be talking today about a healthy aging assessment and the community health assessment, which been working on for what feels like forever. So I'm really glad to have the opportunity to talk about it. Tim, I don't know if you have anything you want to say before you hear a lot of my voice. Okay, great. So I have a lot of slides.
Tim is now being the sage on the side. Sage on the side, okay.
Um, so I feel like I have a lot of talking points for myself because I feel like this is, oh, sorry. A lot of.
Julie, the clicker is in front of you.
Oh, oh, great. Slide rate.
And which direction does she point to then?
I think it doesn't matter.
Okay. This is a little easier. Okay, so I hope it's not too much information. I'm going to try really hard. Okay, so the first thing I wanted to talk about is the Healthy Aging Assessment. So this was a survey and focus groups and key informant interviews done in 2022. There had been a similar assessment done in 2016, so it had been quite a bit of time. It was definitely time for us to do this again. This was led in 2016 by our colleague, my colleague Lynn Schoeff, and she led this assessment again, which was a lot of of time and effort. So we got qualitative data from the survey and then, sorry, quantitative data from the survey and qualitative data from the four focus groups and 23 key informant interviews. The survey had questions across nine domains, including things like demographics, living situation, healthcare, food access and more. The 2016.
See that the median household income for families in Needham is about $225,000, but what I wanted to highlight was the vast difference in median household income between stable mothers with children under 18 and that number 225,000. That is the case in Massachusetts and the United States as well. So those Needham is in blue and then US is in orange. But the difference is a little more stark in Needham because the median household income is that much higher. Those family types are also experiencing poverty at higher rates. If we look at the bottom left, we can see data from the Healthy Aging Assessment that I talked about at the beginning. And 35% of those respondents reported being somewhat worried about the cost of living and another 15% or so reported being very or extremely worried about the cost of living. And I've included quotes sort of sprinkled throughout the presentation here. Those quotes are all from the Healthy Aging Assessment. So in this instance, we can see that survey respondents really feel that Needham, living in Needham is becoming unaffordable as they age. And we'll see that in the next slide, that this.
I'm so sorry. I'm not sure what's happening.
Chair and to the presenters.
Yeah.
Just, I'm working with Mark Mendel right now. They're having some issues over the Needham channel. So the Needham channel had dropped off about five minutes ago. Apparently they're working on it. We have some redundant sound that just picked up about two minutes ago, but we're working through some technical issues dealing with some of the Needham channel. Thanks, Tom Sears. Mark's working it.
And these slides are posted as part of the packet for anyone in the audience who.
It's being recorded.
The slide advanced. Yes.
Of course.
Okay, so housing was a really prominent theme in the Healthy Aging Assessment, as I mentioned earlier. The price of housing, the availability of housing, especially accessible, age-friendly housing for people who want to remain in Needham as they age. If we look at the left two graphs, those are from the Census Bureau, we can see that Needham largely has owner occupied housing with only about 15% of residents who rent. But if you look at the bottom graph, we can see that a much higher percentage of those renters are cost burdened. So that means they spend 30% or more of their income on housing. And again, this is not inclusive to Needham. It is also the case in Massachusetts and the United States. We look at the table on the top right, that's from the National Community Survey that Needham takes part in. And residents ranked pretty poorly. The availability of affordable quality housing, cost of living and variety of housing options. So percent positive is the number of people who rated it with food or excellent. And from the Healthy Aging Survey, again, you can see that respondents commented about housing as they get older, especially when it comes to the desire to get homes.
I'm sorry.
Okay, transportation, also a pretty prominent theme in the Healthy Aging Survey. On the left, we can see that most of the Healthy Aging respondents reported that they drive, but the, you know, second option, most popular option was that they walk, which I guess I found surprising. And in the quotes, you can see that there are some concerns about what is going to happen when they can no longer drive. And for some folks in the housing authority, that they're not located near any of the amenities that you find in the town center. The graph on the right is from the survey of Housing Authority residents and that was that assessment published in 2020. And the gray portions that I've highlighted are folks who said that they were unfamiliar with transportation resources that are currently that were available in the town. And that I think is the part we were most concerned about because we know that there is a need for better transportation resources, but what this highlights is that perhaps we're not advertising those resources to the folks who need them the most. I want to go to the graph on the right again to also talk about that population from the Housing Authority that indicated that they're unfamiliar with community food resources. Again, we found that to be concerning that that so many respondents reported being unfamiliar with, you know, community dining program at the CAF or the Community Council Food Pantry, for instance. The table on the left is from the Healthy Aging Survey again, where we can see that there are a number of reasons that people experience barriers to food, food access or food security issues because, you know, we can see that people also reported having difficulty finding the food they wanted getting transportation to the grocery store or, for instance, being able to cook food because they they have a health issue. So there are many more barriers to food than just the cost of food. And then noted in some of the focus groups from the the Aging Assessment was really the fact that expensive groceries are expensive in Needham and they had a need to travel outside of Needham to get more affordable groceries to, for example, new or water. And that poses another issue in transportation. Excellent. I could allow access to that nice area. So we have pretty limited data on this. Unfortunately, I think this is a place where the community health survey would be really useful because we're missing that that middle group of people. Again, according to the Census Bureau, there's just about 1.3% of Needham residents that don't have health insurance. So that number is pretty low, but we know, again, there are more barriers to healthcare that exist than just not having insurance. So the middle table shows us that for the Healthy Aging Assessment, about 20% of the respondents reported that they have trouble accessing healthcare. And at the time, the survey was administered, COVID was very much a concern for a lot of folks, but transportation was also a big issue.
What period was the survey in Needham?
Summer 2012. So COVID, right, you would totally be positive, but it was listed as one of the biggest barriers at the time is that fear of COVID. Also the lack of provider availability, which is a particular issue. In the the bottom table, which is the survey of Housing Authority residents, over a third of our, the respondents reported having difficulty doing errands, like visiting a doctor's office, which I think is notable. We didn't ask why, but again, transportation was a big thing that came up. At the top is data from the National Community Survey again, in which Needham residents pretty positive.
They they pretty positively rated the availability of affordable quality healthcare and preventative healthcare services. A little bit less, a little bit lower ranked was availability of affordable quality mental health care, which leads us to our next topic. Next slide. Next slide. Mental health and substance use. So first for mental health, we have data from the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey, which I actually came and presented to you about last fall. It's a survey Needham has participated in since 2006. So we have great historical data on the students. And it covers mental health and substance use pretty thoroughly. Unfortunately, we saw a really sharp increase from 2018 to 2021 in feelings of anxiety or depression in high school and middle school students. And I highlighted that highlighted that in the box. And we also saw from that data that female students experienced that at much higher rates than their male peers. They reported it at roughly two times the the rates that their male peers did. In the right graph, again, we're going back to the Healthy Aging Survey where about 30% or so responded that they felt lonely or isolated. And we actually asked in that survey about COVID and the relation to COVID. And about a third of the respondents had reported feeling more isolated than before the pandemic. Obviously, the mental health crisis is not unique to just youth and the 60 plus population. But again, we're missing that middle group for this. Next slide.
And Julie, the, there's not any data around that middle group that came from the hospital's community assessment.
That's a great question. The the community assessment from the hospital, they often clumped their communities and their catchment area altogether. So we weren't able to get Needham specific. And honestly, their assessment was very shallow, low level. They didn't dig into it much. We do get some additional mental health data from them, but it hasn't been comprehensive enough for us to sort of categorize it and bring it here with any sort of.
Actionable.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Substance use, we also have the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey data on the left. We're able to compare Needham to the Metro West region, which is great. But we can see that Needham's reported current alcohol use, so that was alcohol use within the 30 days before the survey is notably higher than that of the Metro West region. And the current marijuana use is slightly higher than that of the Metro West region. If we look at the table on the top right, which is data from the CDC, adults in Needham reported binge drinking and that that is defined as males having five or more drinks on one occasion and females having four or more drinks on one occasion. So Needham adults reported binge drinking in the past 30 days at a slightly higher rate than Massachusetts or United States adults. And on the bottom, I just wanted to highlight that we do have some data available from the Needham Police on drug overdoses, suspected drug overdoses and drug overdose deaths. And I always sort of want to highlight that this is something that does happen in Needham and is not something that only happens in other communities. Next slide. Next slide again. All right, complex and chronic conditions is a really big category. I think that there is a lot that could go under this, but I think disability status is important one and a good place to start. So the left graph is disability status of our 65 plus population from the US Census Bureau. And Needham has slightly lower percentages of hearing, vision, cognitive, ambulatory and independent living difficulties, but slightly higher percentage of self-care difficulty. Related to disability status, the Needham Housing Authority resident survey in that about 50% reported that they have difficulty walking or climbing stairs, which I thought was really significant. And again, the quotes are from the Healthy Aging Survey where we had a lot of folks note that they have trouble we had a lot of folks note that they have trouble getting around town because of a lack of benches or a lack of accessible buildings.
Right. And there's no elevator.
Yeah, yeah, that was elevators and automatic doors was another concern. Next slide.
Well, I will point out that our automatic door at CATH was fixed today.
Not reflected in the survey.
It's a whole new world.
The chronic disease data that we have comes largely from the CDC and the Mass Department of Health. The table on the left shows the CDC data on chronic disease, chronic disease prevalence by census tract. I included the map of the census tract, just so you would know what it is I'm referring to. But that's not really the point. The point of the chart and the two things I think we can take away from it are that the disease, the chronic diseases with the highest prevalence are arthritis, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, depression and obesity. And the second thing I think we can take from this table is that there aren't huge discrepancies between the census tracts. So we're not really seeing huge disparities in chronic conditions based on geographic region and town. The table on the right is from the Mass Department of Health, which lists the leading causes of death in Needham. I'm showing 2019 to 2021 here, but consistently throughout cancer and heart disease are number one and two. They sort of bob between one and two. All right, next slide. Oh, yep, next slide. That's informative. Okay. Because I spat a lot of data at you at once. So let's bring it back to the priority areas I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting from Beth Israel Deaconess. Their community health needs assessment. They had equitable access to care, social determinants of health, mental health and substance use and complex and chronic conditions as their priority areas. When we looked through the data, it's like a 40 page document of data that we're hoping to get public soon. We decided to make these priority areas more specific to Needham and thought, you know, under equitable access to care, something more specific to Needham is access to transportation resources for healthcare needs. That seems like a priority here. Under social determinants of health, we felt cost of living burden was a priority. Mental health and substance use felt appropriate. Under complex and chronic diseases, we felt physical health, perhaps heart disease and other risk factors felt like a good priority area. So with the information from the CHA and those priority areas, the next step in this process is to do a community health improvement plan. So the community health assessment is the the data and the conclusions we make from that data. And the community health improvement plan is the what are we going to do about it? And the what are we going to do about it links to all of the other projects and large scale priorities that we have within the division, like our strategic plan, our board of health goals and our goals as public health staff members. And we are currently engaging people in this process now and I think hope to have that by the end of the year. And the, oh, next slide. Yeah. Oh, it works that time. The last slide. So the the healthy aging assessment is available currently. They, we created a synopsis for that for people who don't want to read the full report. And that is being translated into.
Both that and the executive summary for their community health assessment will be translated Spanish, Mandarin, Russian, and we'll have an English version.
And the community health assessment and eventually the community health improvement plan will be published soon, by the end of the year, we hope. That was a lot, but I don't know if you have any questions for me.
Thank you.
Questions. Thank you.
I have a question. I noticed that the youth behaviors, the Needham youth were higher on cigarette smoking, which had not been true in the past. Is it because everybody else has adopted the 21 or is there something in there? Because it used to be that they were about the same with other risky behaviors, but the cigarette smoking was off the charts different. So.
Well, I'll take a stab. Well, we don't necessarily know because the the Metro West Health Survey doesn't ask specifically. I could take a large stab based off of other things we've done within the team that as we work on the vaping requirements and not allowing that access to other things or trying to find other things increases rates of other things as well. So I think we'll see a little bit of teetering between all of them for a while. And hopefully through some of our work, we can get both down.
Thank you.
I have a question. In your in your themes and important takeaways at the beginning, you talked about the the strengths of aging in Needham and it lists transportation services. And then transportation is also listed under challenging, the challenges. And I'm just, I, I we all have parents. I can see where transportation is challenging. But what did they, what was said positively about?
So I think the tricky part was the people who use it had really great things to say about it. Who use the the community council or the CATH services. I think the problem was that not enough people do use it. And there is a lot, there are a lot of people who are not aware. And so they say there aren't, there aren't enough transportation resources in town. I do still think that especially transportation to doctor's appointments was a big concern for people and those services are not they're not necessarily the hours that you need and available, right? And the community council, you know, there are limits to how many rides you can take and how far.
Ends at three o'clock.
So, yeah.
Different things.
But like trips into Boston for healthcare, I think was a big concern.
Yeah. The agent services division did get a $50,000 grant basically for cab rides to medical appointments. But one of the challenges is that a cab ride into MGH and back would be pretty expensive and you wouldn't get too many appointments out of it. So that that is one of the challenges, you know, if you can support a program that has, you know, Needham Newton and Wellesley. Can you actually support the cost of going into Boston? Well, not unless you're willing to cut out three people who want to go to New So that is one of our challenges. We have, we've found resources, but there's still limitations.
Yeah, if I may, on the transportation issue, it's interesting that Needham residents 60 plus, 84% drive very often, which also explains why they don't know about other transportation because they don't need other transportation until they need it.
Yes.
And then on food security, it's interesting how well everything seems to be working, that how many people know what you have to offer. You know, shadow for the need community farm. That's what, that was number two for
Yeah.
Most people liked it, used it and knew about it.
Perhaps, you know, the other programs, we need to take a piece of advice from the community farm and how they're advertising or something. Yeah.
I was, this is actually very interesting. It's really good. Thank you.
Do, back to the transportation again. So do you think we actually have hidden capacity there that can serve more people? Or do you think there are enough restrictions on the program that actually you functionally can't serve more people? I guess I'm curious about where that line is there.
So and that's, that's a good question. It's interesting because it'll be part of our CHIPS Community Health Improvement Plan. I think part of the process is to see their capacity. Community Council and CATH are both part of our CHIPS process. So that's super helpful to see their capacity and what they could do. But then what other resources can we rely on or grants can we look for or processes that could help us get there? Can we maybe talk with BI more about how can you do virtual appointments for residents that may not need it? Or is there a grant you can provide to us that we can get those residents to those appointments, especially if they're in Boston, things like that? Looking at those different processes and how to connect residents to those is, I think, going to be one of our key things for our community improvement.
And do you think residents understand that they can and maybe should see if there's a Needham appointment before just taking a Boston appointment? I mean, I wonder if there's another layer there as well.
Do you think there's a big difference between 2016 and now? If you think back to, you know, when I first started in HHS, the town had one van. We now have three vans and a car, three handicap accessible vans and one car. So we have a lot more options thanks to the generosity of the town and also state grants. We do have some limitations in how we use it. We have, you know, a pool of van drivers and stretching them is is challenging, you know, but we have a lot more resources than we used to. The medical taxi grant, $50,000 from last year, $50,000 this year is another good example. But figuring out how we can stretch those and how we can try to turn those grants into recurring revenue would be, or recurring funding streams is is always a challenge.
I would wonder too if Beth Israel could maybe participate in in Mary Ann's suggestion. I mean, you know, part of their their thing these days is bringing all the Boston physicians out to the burbs, whether that's at Beth Israel and Newton Wells, they all have programs like that. So I wonder if they they could be a resource to help shift some of that travel burden to a local provider.
Tanya, the council on aging director actually asked this question. So, yeah, yeah, it's a new thing we can try to bring up.
I got a question back to your themes and important takeaways. One of the challenges was programs geared towards the older seniors. And I was wondering what that meant. Is it those ones, are we missing those or are there too many of those and not enough for other people? What what does that one mean?
No, yeah, sure.
We have a continual challenge trying to get younger seniors, seniors who maybe are, you know, who have turned 60 but are still working or seniors who aren't available during the day because they have caretaking responsibilities for grandchildren or another family member. We're constantly sort of struggling to get the newer seniors into CATH programs. They're not necessarily interested in playing mahjong at 11:00 in the morning and they might not be available to play mahjong at 11:00 in the morning. But what 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 would interest them, what can challenge them? If they do have caretaking responsibilities, what can we offer in the late afternoon or evening to try to bring them in?
Is that actually a problem? Like if they don't need it, do we, do we care that they're not using it? Like if they're busy and having, yeah.
So I think we do in part because when you talked about, you know, aging and isolation. They won't have that. So they they may have a full social calendar, for lack of a better word, because they still work or because they are engaging in caretaking responsibilities. And then they're going to at some point be 78 and not have a community anymore. They're not going to have friends. They're not going to have, you know, an activity or social schedule where they always do line dancing every Tuesday. Plus, we we want to get more customers.
Be more parking.
We do, but I think it's always a challenge is trying to get the young persons. We do want to try to get them, whether it's you know, for the same programs or for different programs that would be more interesting to them as they're not yet retired.
Right. Outreach is a process.
Anything else?
I appreciate all that. So that is, I guess the question is, what are your you've sort of given us some priorities. What are like the first two things you're putting in for next year? How are you thinking about that?
GSR4, Tim. This is a good softball.
So I think one of the things we're doing as part of the budget process is we are looking to make a lot of ARPA-funded positions permanent. So physicians of the town has funded through the ARPA funds are funded through the end of calendar year 24, which is halfway through fiscal '25. The requests from Health and Human Services is to for the FY '25 budget process, we're starting, is to ask for half a year of funding in '25 and a full year of funding in '26. That's sort of our biggest request, sort of staffing and resources. And that's true in public health and aging. Long term, I think, you know, we would love to have funding and we were going to explore some different options for grant funding. But to do sort of a survey of that missing middle, like a comprehensive community health survey, so that we don't sort of say, here's what young people think and here's what old people think and never in the middle will we.
Tim, would you mind mentioning which positions are on the?
Oh, sure. So there's a aging, part-time aging social worker, a clinician, I should say, but it is a social worker. There's a full-time youth clinician and there's a public health nurse and Julie, our epidemiologist. Our positions at the town has funded through ARPA. One of the things that I have always been impressed with the town and the select board, I talked to colleagues in other communities who are health directors and they get frustrated because they weren't given an opportunity to say, here's what we need. And one of the things I really respect about the town was because it was a public health emergency. Question was, what do you need? And we put in as Health and Human Services, our request, and it was all approved. And then the town went into what sort of grant programs we can do for community arts and business recovery and public works. So we've been very lucky to have that generous support for the past two years and the next year and a quarter. But we're looking to try to make some decisions permanent.
Okay. Now we know.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Great work, Julie. The next item on our agenda is the Arts and Cultural Action Plan. I'm going to adjust my fluid levels prior to.
I was wondering if you guys, we're gonna all be on Zoom. emerged from the hallway.
You'll just want to scooch the microphones around. Welcome. So Amy, are you going to start by introducing everybody to our vast TV listening audience and viewing audience? But thank you for coming in this evening. We're so glad to finally be hearing about Action Plan.
I was here about a year ago in front of the select board to share with you the good news that the town of Needham had heard from MAPC to provide technical assistance to develop an arts and cultural action plan. And so we kicked off the effort in November of last year. And for the last 12 months, we have been very busy. And so Charlie Nanda, who's the Needham Council for Arts and Culture for a number of years, is is chairperson and also a member. And I have led the charge with a working group of 12 volunteers that represent various arts and cultural organizations throughout town. And we have worked with, I can't call them anything else, just a dream team from MAPC. We've got Abby Judd and Archana Menon, who have devoted a tremendous amount of time and energy and great enthusiasm for this whole process. So I'm going to turn it over to them. But I just want to publicly thank them for really embracing this community and integrating themselves into the arts and cultural, you know, environment here to learn more about the community and and what it offers and helping to catalog everything and to make some really fantastic recommendations. So I'm going to turn it over to Abby and Archana.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Amy, and thank you all so much for having us. We're really excited to be here. As Amy mentioned, we've been working in Needham for the last 12 months and it's been a really wonderful year getting to come to Needham. So glad to be here and good to see familiar faces and friendly faces as well. Tonight's objectives, and just go through our slide, we have a brief slide deck, but really look forward to hearing from you all directly, just with any questions. And I just want to make sure, okay, ah, there we go. Okay, all right, here we go. So for this evening, we really wanted to just go over the cultural planning process that we've taken for the last 12 months, show some of the key engagement findings through the different engagement methods that we've taken on for the Arts and Culture Action Plan. And then also go through the goals, actions and strategies that we've shared. And I have a copy of those for each of you all as well. And if you have any specific questions about those, and then also just wanting to make sure that we're responding to your questions and feedback. We're still in the drafting phase and want to make sure to have the feedback from you all to help make sure that this is a plan that is worth adopting and exciting for, to hear from you all of what resonates. Just briefly, before we get started, just want to ask, we're maybe a question of why do arts and cultural planning? And noting that arts and culture certainly shape not only the lived experience and sense of belonging and connection to a community, but also policies and how a town invests in that also relates beyond arts and culture as well into public health and safety, connection and wellbeing. And so we've taken on this planning process and we've done this multiple times through Metropolitan Area Planning Council, providing technical we've taken on this planning process and we've done this multiple times through Metropolitan Area Planning Council, providing technical assistance and going through and inventorying the arts and cultural assets that exist, really thinking through the data through both surveys and focus groups, but also going through and getting feedback on what we're hearing from folks, just as any other planning process would. And thinking through how that will lead into what strategies we're recommending that you'll ultimately see in the action plan. And as Amy mentioned, this is just an overview of the last twelve months and how we've gone about engaging with community members. And where we have started from last November into today is meeting with our cultural planning working group for have three separate meetings with them, but they've been integral to each phase of the process. And the first phase has really was really around data and listening and thinking of what exists in Needham. And then throughout the spring and summer have doing more engagement, both through the survey and focus groups. And then currently, we're in this final phase of the plan development, which we're excited to bring to you all tonight. And all of this, I'll just reiterate what Amy said a moment ago about our working group. We're really grateful to have a diverse representation of different cultural groups, of artists, of local community leaders, and also town leadership as well, all throughout this process. And their voices really have shaped each of these stages and phases throughout the process as well. And a key part of the working group was establishing the vision and values to guide this planning process. And so this vision really emphasizes the role of arts and culture in everyday life in Needham, but also really stressing the importance of connection and collaboration and reflecting cultural diversity that's present in Needham. And really wanting to ensure that that's reflected in the leadership and also that there's a dynamic and accessible programming and really fostering that sense of belonging in all parts of arts and culture in Needham. And similarly, just to note that the core values that were really guiding this process are centered in equity, accessibility, connection and collaboration. And came up throughout all forms of all parts of this process as well. And so I'm going to hand it off to my colleague, Archana Menon, to share a little bit about the engagement and what we heard through this process.
Sure, thanks, Abby. So through this process, we've engaged with multiple and varied stakeholders in Needham. And to do that, we've employed a variety of different formats. Primary among them was the townwide survey that we did this spring and then followed it up with focus group meetings as well as a folk public forum that we just held in early October. We also did a few pop-up engagements during the multicultural festival and the Panzi Festival, all in collaboration with N C A C and Amy's leadership as well. So through the townwide survey, two hundred and seventy-two people responded to that survey. And what was interesting was that over a hundred people self-identified as artists. And some of the core themes that emerged in in that survey is what we're going to walk you all through. But the survey essentially was, or the goal of the survey essentially was to get an understanding of the arts and culture assets in Needham, the core challenges in the arts and culture community, as well as opportunities for further collaboration, coordination among these assets. So what cultural assets are most important to Needham? The top five that came up as most important were performance spaces, arts and culture events, cinema or live theater spaces, public art and youth and family programming and classes. And where do people participate in arts and culture in Needham? And forty-three percent respondents engage with arts and culture in Needham in public facilities, including the schools. And it was notable to to see that many of the respondents do travel outside of Needham to access and engage in arts and culture experiences. So in the past year, how often did these respondents engage in arts and culture activities? And it was notable to see that most of them attended arts and culture ethnic or heritage festivals. That was sort of the most popular or most frequented arts and culture event or activity, followed by school-based arts and culture programming and also live performances of music and dance or theater. And then finally, respondents said that they they attended art gallery exhibitions in Needham. What was interesting was that none of them mentioned visiting the history museum in Needham. So that's that's something to kind of think about in how we are bringing arts and culture and historical assets in Needham to coordinate with each other because they are such key community anchors and they have so much to offer the community. All right. So we asked the survey respondents, why are they participating in arts and culture? And the top reasons was to be happy for their, you know, social, mental, emotional wellbeing. And also, interestingly, to support local artists and artisans. So there is so much pride within Needham community members for their local artists and for the local sort of small businesses, the creative small businesses. And that that seems to speak through this survey. Satisfaction with arts and culture. Yep. So over sixty percent of survey respondents agree or strongly agree that arts, heritage and culture are integral to Needham. But most of them said that they are aware of arts and culture institutions and the kind of programming that these institutions or organizations offer. However, in 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 the large scheme of things, they don't really know where to access information about arts and culture programming. And that came up as sort of the number one obstacle for people to engage in arts and culture in Needham. I think something else that came up about about obstacles to engage in arts and culture also was, at that time, at least the people that we asked these questions to, said that there was no local newspaper in Needham. That seems to have changed with the Needham Observer. So it's it's good to see that happening. And I think it'll be even better if there's arts and culture sort of programming mentioned and supported in these townwide publications. How are they receiving information about arts and culture? Most of them mentioned that they are receiving that through word of mouth or social media. And again, just generally, communication and coordination among these arts and culture institutions and organizations came up as a core challenge, not only for the institutions themselves, but also for artists who wants who want to collaborate with these organizations or institutions. And so who are Needham's artists? Sixty percent, over sixty percent of the survey respondents identified as artists. And forty-one percent reported that they earn a portion of their income from their art or creative practice. I think I forgot to mention that painting, drawing and photography, followed by live theater, came up as the most the the most number of artists engaging in these practices and they live in Needham. Where do artists work? So this was also interesting because while most of the artists either work exclusively at home or in a combination of work and an external space, thirty percent mentioned that they also work outside of their homes. So it's interesting that there is this environment that supports artists doing their work in in the community outside of their homes as well. So I'll hand it back over to Abby to take us through the proposed goals, the recommended action steps for this plan.
Thank you, Archana. As you can see, there's a lot of activity that's already ongoing in Needham around arts and culture. And so as we were going through these goals and trying to think about where there can be improvements, there's a first recognition that there are so many resources present. And so our first goal is really thinking about centralizing Needham's arts and culture resources that exist. And so there's frequently a lack of clarity or coordination or collaboration or consistent communication were kind of some of the core challenges that came up. And so thinking about this first goal is really just centralizing where folks are going for arts and culture resources and knowing where to find things. The second goal really is just to strengthen Needham's arts and cultural arts and culture capacity and infrastructure. Many of the arts and culture programs and organizations are volunteer-run and are have limited capacity to do all the things that they would like to do. But there is a desire to see additional opportunities to engage with community members and also provide additional programs. So thinking about how do we strengthen those pieces? And also noting the physical infrastructure of where arts and culture happens came up a lot. So we'll get into that in a moment as well. Thirdly, the third goal is really thinking about supporting Needham's cultural equity initiatives, knowing that there are many different conversations going on and that in our planning work, we really emphasize both arts and culture and part of this proposal, noting that they play an important, both arts and culture play a really critical role of connecting community members, but also reflecting different cultural identities and building leadership within the community, noting efforts in schools, but also in thinking about Needham's history and how it's told. And then finally, the fourth goal is really noting that arts and culture can improve the quality of life in Needham. And that is by bringing arts and culture within existing planning efforts and strategies that are important, whether that's climate action planning, thinking about housing, thinking about transportation and safety as well. So and also economic vitality. And so now I just want to take a moment to kind of walk through each of these goals. First, noting that under each goal, there are three primary strategies. And then some examples of specific actions that are connected to each of those strategies. We are prioritized, these are, the strategies are prioritized by what we heard back from the both the public forum and then also in the digital engagement following that. So for goal number one, the strategy is really first focus on administration and coordination. And then thinking about awareness through both promotion and communication. And then finally, formalizing and kind of standardizing public art and cultural programming. So the core or popular actions that were identified underneath each of these strategies is first is thinking about the many different cultural committees and councils that support arts and culture and organizing those efforts. So they aren't overlapping or duplicative, but really can complement each other well. Secondly, this is something that comes up in many communities that we work in is just having a central calendar and communication space. And there are a couple of different examples that we've looked at that might be helpful, but also just having a place where people can go to know what's going on. And then finally, having a public art strategy that is both identifying the goals and vision for public art in Needham, but also establishing a clear and transparent process that's equitable in its administration of how awards are funded and how artists are paid as well. In terms of goal two, really strengthening Needham's arts and cultural capacity and infrastructure, the three strategies. First, focused on establishing a position within the town to really implement the contents of this plan, noting that this might be held by multiple people, but really thinking about what is possible when there's somebody to hold everyone's feet to the fire and to task to bring the plan into implementation. And then also to increase funding for arts and culture, maybe doesn't surprise anyone in the room as a recommendation also within the plan. Noting that Needham has also made investments in arts and culture in really incredible ways. And then three is really improving that accessibility to arts and cultural facilities, like Powers Hall, which we're sitting in right now, is an incredible asset that community members would like to know how to be active participants in and utilize. So again, the specific actions that were really prioritized by folks through our engagement is really drafting up a job description of what an arts and culture administrator would do and how that would interact with specifically the town or the town's current positions and where there could be more strategic alignment and that. But then also helping it under the second strategy, identifying those public and private funding sources to support arts and culture. And then finally, thinking about a performing arts facility has come up many a time in our conversations and thinking about where there's strain on using elementary school, the elementary schools facility and where there can be other opportunities to have performing arts. For goal three, the strategies are really focused on fostering inclusion and belonging through arts and culture, as we've talked about already. But also thinking about the programming and events that reflect the diversity in Needham. Speaking of earlier, the multicultural festival and things that are really celebrating the diversity that is growing within Needham. And the third strategy is really thinking about what cultural equity can look like, both within the town's institutions and both schools and in reflecting in the town's history. So some of the specific actions that were raised are thinking about how to make public facilities and cultural facilities more, making sure that they're up to eighty-eight compliance and thinking about those community initiatives that really focus on multicultural learning and celebration is under the second strategy. And then thirdly, thinking about cultural equity initiatives within schools, specifically in middle school and high school is what came up most frequently. But also thinking about how the story of Needham is told and under unearthing or uncovering omitted histories that exist as well. And then finally, improving Needham's quality of life through arts and culture. The first recommended strategy is thinking about those local policies that allow arts and culture to thrive in a community. And then thinking about what partnerships can strengthen arts and culture and local business, but also align with some of the things we talked about earlier of different planning policies around community health and wellbeing. And then finally, incorporating arts and culture initiatives into making a safe and resilient community. So the specific actions that were mentioned, first, thinking about affordable housing policies and utilizing ADUs as potential spaces for artist housing and thinking about who's able to access space to live in Needham and be a working artist, because brought up multiple times in both focus groups and in the survey. And then also thinking about what partnerships can exist with the many local businesses within Needham and where there can be mutually beneficial partnerships that can also help with professional development, really thinking about artists, not only as just artists, but also as creative entrepreneurs and folks who are really bringing the creative industry within Needham. And then finally, something that was spoken about quite a bit was thinking about street painting to help with traffic calming measures to improve pedestrian safety, knowing that that's also a priority within the within the town more generally. So I just also wanted to share with you all, based off of the public forum, specific actions that received the most interest or note, and if you were able to attend the public forum, we asked folks to go and put a sticky dot on things that they were very passionate about. And so these were just the top four prioritized actions specifically from the public forum. And just noting that there's a real emphasis again on goal three, which is focusing on cultural equity and supporting initiatives that exist. And then also thinking about that infrastructure and capacity that the town has are really the strongest points that stuck with people and they chose to stick with stick a sticky on it to make sure that we knew that as well. So we wanted to share this with you all. And also note that we are still in the process of drafting the plan and really want to hear from you all tonight if you have any questions or comments. And our next step is really identifying implementation partners with the working group for these specific actions. So they're not just out there, but they have folks that can be brought in into thinking about how these things are implemented. And then we want to share a final draft with the town for a final review. And then hopefully, everything can be adopted for the Needham Arts and Culture Action Plan. But we'll stop there and just some photos of our fun times in Needham in the last year. And we just want to open it up for questions and comments and see if there are ways that we can make this a plan that's worth adopting from a less perspective. So thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to start, Kathy?
Yeah, I think this is excellent. I would love to see a lot of this stuff move forward in the town. I'm interested for the two of you with M A P C who've worked with other communities. You know, what are the things that you've seen really have a big impact in other communities when they've done them specific things? And you mentioned the calendar. So I was thinking of it, what what else beyond that? And you mentioned the calendar. So I was thinking of it, what, what else beyond that?
So one of the communities we just recently worked in was Watertown. And we went through and did their public art master plan process, which is similar to this. But within that process, they also hired an arts and culture planner who is overseeing both their committee, but also is tying in with other elements within the town. And it was interesting, she, the planner who's in Watertown was a part of the process and came through and understood the contours of what was going on in the community, but was also able to share out with the committee those specific actions. So I think that is something that we've seen to be super effective and also know that we are in communication with arts and culture planners pretty frequently and think about the resources that we can provide them when it comes down to brass tacks of a lot of different policy issues that come up and being able to troubleshoot those through the different processes. So we've been in contact thinking about what are the different ways that arts and culture are funded? And have drafted some evergreen resources that can be shared with someone who is positioned to be able to advocate on behalf of arts and culture. And I'm not sure, Archana, if there are other additions that you have or?
I think you covered most of it. The only thing I might add is that, you know, the person who is in charge or the people who are in charge or staffed with this arts and culture planning or coordination work, it's important to, to also keep sort of an ongoing inventory of arts and culture assets in the community. Who's in charge of these organizations, who's, who's taking care and maintaining these places, spaces, institutions? And so that can also be charged, that, that task can also be charged to the arts and culture planner or a team of people who are doing this work. And having that inventory is definitely sort of, it's an asset by itself for any community.
Yeah, on that bit, staff clinic, this be like grant funded, how, how do other towns fund this? Is it state grants? Is it?
So I think there are a lot of different ways that these positions are funded. Some of them and some of the models that we were looking into within this process and can certainly bring in more examples in the actual draft of the plan. But thinking about are there fees for renting facilities or are there things that can be pulled in within that process? There are different, there, there's a slew of different types of arts and culture funding or grant funds that could be applied to staffing. It's a little bit harder when things are a part of operational cost in that way. But I think we've also looked at different mechanisms for funding public art that could also be leveraged to help within staff capacity. I'm trying to remember, I can get back to you on how the staff position in Watertown is funded as well.
That'd be great.
Sure, absolutely.
Just gonna say, if they were doing a public art, did they do a system like putting in 1% for art or one of those types of approaches?
So we were working with them to develop an ordinance. And I think they're trying to figure out at what point in time that makes sense for them. But we also looked into other tax, whether it's through like hotel occupancy tax, we looked into cannabis tax. We've looked into a couple of different things and can share that memo as well of the overview of funding.
The wide range of local options taxes that might be available.
Good. Heidi?
It's a very impressive plan. Would be great to implement all of it. Be a very colorful place. Yeah. Thank you.
Marcus, any questions?
Got here a little bit late, but I feel like just the work and the depth in the, the knowledge that you have for this. I just feel like arts and culture are the heartbeat of so many different people that may not identify with sports or other things in this town that they're so well known for to an alternative use to really express yourself and to a sense of belonging. I think that's really important for the community that we have and the one that we are trying to establish when it comes to, I would say, just identifying, empowering. And really, when you look from a cultural lens to understand who we have in this town and how to celebrate the people that we have in this town, because we have so many different people from so many different cultures that represent the makeup of Needham. So to have opportunities to really celebrate, to hone in and to acknowledge the different people that we have represented here, I feel like this is something that, you know, if and when we do this right, it'll only make it a more vibrant town. The one that people can, when you talk about the ADUs for affordability for artists and things like that, just alternative, you know, reimagining of the ways that we can just be a better town. And I feel like arts, culture is something that is going to help bring us to a place that we can continue to build upon and the way that we do things and, you know, how we do things and with intentionality. So I appreciate all of you and this is, this is great. So thank you.
So these slides weren't in our packet, so hopefully we'll be able to add them to the packet so that people will be able to go and look and if they have comments that they could send me back. I'm wondering if you also have in the, in your toolkit, is there a set of sort of some enabling policies or guideline policies? Because I know often as a municipality, you're thinking about, well, where are the aspects of a arts and culture plan where you might get into trouble because you want to be able to offer something to everybody? So unfortunately, does that mean there are some things that you don't want to offer at all? Because you can look at it and say, ooh, do we get into a place that might be not where the community wants to go? Is that something that you offer as part of the package?
Can I clarify, just like, do you have an example of something you're thinking about with the policy? Just what you were naming a moment ago?
So I'm thinking even, you know, where we, we are provide an opportunity for everybody for a time limited basis, right? At the holidays, everybody can put something out on the town comment on the, at the holiday, right? But there are things that we think about, you know, people have asked about flying certain flags. Couldn't you fly a flag for a day? Could you, you know, how do you think about those types of issues? And are, are, is there a common set of issues related to displaying art? Or how you think about that, that communities need to be aware of and thoughtful about as they put public programs in place?
I would say that the hope is this working group that we've put together goes forward to become almost stewards of arts, culture, placemaking for Needham. So when there are questions or issues, like the ones that you mentioned, that they can be brainstormed within this sort of brain trust and then some policy can be advanced to either mitigate any negative impacts or to, to advance issues that are really important. Yeah, I mean, I, that's such an interesting question because I think it's something that we also need to kind of be cognizant about. And we need to kind of take into account with this plan as well. And we'll certainly look into that. But I think the hope is that with, with this varied set of stakeholders that we've brought together in this room to talk about arts, culture and placemaking with, with this action plan, the hope is that there is enough, you know, perspectives that will be shared to, to foresee where the problems might be and to kind of collaborate over some solutions together. Yeah.
So, um, last weekend, two weekends ago, I went to the Needham Diversity Initiative Summit. And at that summit, there was a panel. And as I told the town manager, there was one part of the panel that to me was sort of an aha moment, I think. A gentleman on the panel talked about the fact that Needham's Fourth of July celebrations between the Third of July with the fireworks and then the Fourth with the parade was in his experience in the U S, the first experience of feeling fully welcomed by a community. And he really thought that was an amazing event. And the question was, what could the town do that could be more events like that, that create that sensation? And one of the other thoughts that came from the group was, could the town consider doing? We've had requests before to do food truck festivals, but they all talked about doing cultural food trucks, right? Again, as a way to recognize all of the different cultures that are in town. So I think a plan like this lets us build in many different directions. And I was just intrigued by those two possibilities that gave us some ways to move forward in a way that we hadn't considered yet. Yes. So, so just sharing sort of, because I think everything that you've laid out, you know, it, it's all an and strategy. I think it's something that we're all intrigued in and really looking forward to this plan is giving us a roadmap for what we might start to go forward with. But yeah, what is that and as we're looking at bringing things together?
I'm glad you mentioned that. I feel like we didn't get to dive into food nearly as much, but would love to return to Needham for a food truck festival.
Everybody's into food, right? So that's always a thing and sharing.
Can I just tread into dangerous water? You talked about performance arts states. I know the schools are starting to wrestle with that, with high school and Pollard. But is there any thought about doing what Natick has, the T can? And would that be sort of a goal maybe we could start to chew on? Because that might solve some problems, but that would solve our issue of centralizing.
Need a space.
Yeah, I know. That's, that's for them to worry about. Yeah, and an nonprofit. Yes. So I mean, I wonder if that's something that the town could help facilitate.
So that is, one of the recommendations is to start the conversation and knowing that there's a lot of different considerations. And we got great feedback from our working group members of just kind of the processes that would go forward with that. And we've also thought about some just interim solutions of thinking of there, if there's an opportunity to partner with Ole and College or Babson, to think about using their spaces and their intermediate times of whether there's, we both recognize that it takes a while to get to a space like T can. And there are also just considerations of how that's managed and how that's done in coordination. Not to undo the goal number one of like making sure all these things are happening in tandem. But I think we recognize that there are conversations that need to happen, whether that's with the schools specifically right now and knowing that there's upcoming opportunities with the overall planning of the renovation, school renovation plan coming up. And there can be some opportunities to think about how to leverage that together, both as a community space, but that can be also accessed by schools and community members alike.
We could build another prize station, right?
And then decommission it.
And I just wanted to add to your comment about the larger guidance around issues that are coming up. That is something M A P C we're constantly grappling with of like, what are arts friendly policies that towns can think about? And so Archana and I will be also continuing this work in that way. And thankfully, we're not going anywhere after this plan is done. And also would love to continue to be in conversation with Amy as much as possible as well, to continue sharing resources as we come up with guidance around. I know that there's different challenges that come up around restrictions around art and culture. And so that that is continually a conversation that's been happened, happening regionally that we're engaging with and trying to do more research on how to support communities. So.
Yeah, I guess I just think if there were some exemplars in that area, it would be really helpful to us.
Well, you have a wonderful organization downstairs, the town committee called the Needham Council for Arts and Culture. And they're meeting downstairs right now, reviewing thirty eight grants that were submitted. And, and it's a record number. I would say seventy five percent of them are, are brand new. So they're not all the same things that coming back. And I, what I loved hearing about in this comprehensive plan was that a lot of people in Needham still hear about things from word of mouth. Cause that's because we're a small community. We all, we all talk to each other. We care about each other. And my favorite thing to say is, uh, did you know that we have a Russian theater with a Ukrainian based director? That's prestigious and that's here in Needham. Do you know that we have a studio space called Gorsmill Studio that has open gallery space at all times? Did you know that we have a town manager who was a poet on the side and applied to have a poet laureate for this?
How's that going?
It's an open meeting. Go down after this one. I know you want to be here all night. But we have such an amazing community in Needham. And, and I think the arts are what you said, Marcus, they're inclusive, they're accessible, they're open, and they can solve so many problems between, you know, things like, you know, how much I love painting the streets and want to have colored crosswalks everywhere. And they, I think, just are ways to solve. And the Needham Diversity Initiative submitted an application to, and more color and art can bring people together. That multicultural festival that we sponsored last year as well, had a huge turnout. People, people love their theater. And if you ever had a student in school, you know how many students love to perform in plays. And we are, we, we have a bunch of applications right now for things happening in schools as well. So arts enrichment in schools is important too. So there is a lot. It's comprehensive. This dream team was amazing. And I hope you all get a chance to read through the whole plan and make comments and let us know what questions you have.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right. Terrific. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for working with us and we appreciate it. And thank you to Amy and Charlie because we know that the two of you have been like the mainstays, keeping all of it going and bringing this to a whole new level, which is the whole point of this right now. So.
Yeah, we'll hold it up and we'll pass batons to everyone.
She's right, everybody. Exactly.
It's all our responsibility.
As, as one of my board chairs says, you're all precinct workers now. So.
Thank you.
There we go. And next, I think we're turning to the town manager. We are. So we've had some references to ARPA funds.
Yes.
Are we ready?
The fan base. Yeah. Worried about, worried about the arts.
You know, ma'am chair, that whenever I go to a school event and there's music, I'm just floored by the, the talent of our students. And I was thinking, people who don't have children in school don't know when these events are. Or, you know, you could go to the high school musical or even like the, I'm sure there's a holiday concert. So promoting them, I mean, I'd even go to that, you know, because you used to go to when your kids were young and then you, you fall out of it. So.
There's a spectacular holiday concert and you can go and sing the Halloween chorus with everybody.
There's a lot to be done.
Yep.
Ma'am Chair, this is our regular update of the ARPA proposal budget. As you know, the American Risk Plan Act provided Needham with nine point one nine nine million in funding, some of it from the state and some of it from the county. All of the funds are now in the town's coffers, so we have it all ready to spend. And we have spent much of, some of it. As you, as Tim McDonald noted, we did ask H H S what they needed and they told us and refunded that at over a million dollars as the board recommended and approved funding, over a million dollars. And that funding does continue through December thirty first of twenty twenty four. I think you can agree that the team that, that they've presented and that Julie has done with the epidemiology work has been fantastic. So they are seeking to continue those positions moving forward. So we'll hear more about that when we present our budget to you in January. In terms of ventilation, we allocated three hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars for the library chiller. We were at some point going to rent a chiller because there was a year lead time in order to purchase the chiller. But we were able to work it so that it would, it would make it through. And we're expecting the chiller to be delivered and installed in the March, April timeframe. So hopefully that will all go well with technology. The item that we are continuing, we did a lot of work on remote participation. And now we're working on upgrades to the town's wireless network so that we can continue to have robust participation in meetings like this one, which we're able to offer on a hybrid basis. Economic development also included the arts. As you know, the ARPA budget funded the mural on West Street. And we are still holding funds in economic development. We have a new, as you know, a new economic development director we'll be working with, who is actually downstairs with the N C A C, because he's also the arts coordinator, working with the arts and all of our arts groups and the Council of Economic Advisers on what the next proposal is. We had some ideas, but we're going to let him think about that and get back to you. Again, that has to be spent by twenty four. And then we have some water sewer drain in the state budget, including temporary project manager services. We also have allocated three hundred and ninety six thousand dollars for the replacement or repair of the sluice gate at Rosemary Pond. Remember, this plays a significant role in our stormwater as the water runs from the brook into Rosemary. We have to be able to have this gate in order to control how fast and where that water goes. Public Works is expecting that we may be able to repair as opposed to replace, although we've been holding a replacement. So that, the sluice gate is actually out to bid. So once that comes in, if we do have a savings, we'll be back to you. We're hoping to redirect any savings in that line to begin the hydrology report that we've been talking about with respect to stormwater capacity. So I think that's a logical move there, but more on that later. With respect to the county money, which is the larger share, the reservoir, we did fund the first B M P. the reservoir, we did fund the first B M P, which is a best management practice, which was part of the stormwater related to the McLeod Field has taking pressure off the reservoir. So that piece was done. We're also completing the design of the reservoir project. We're expecting to bid it this winter with construction likely to begin next summer. So the Director of Public Works's goal is to have all these projects done by twenty twenty four. With the major projects that involve construction and contracts, we do have until twenty six. But her goal is to move them all along and out so that we have the capacity to take on all the other projects that the town is is looking for us to complete. Similarly, the sewer main, which is the most expensive project here in the three point four million dollar range. This is a, this is a portion of the sewer, one twenty eight sewer interceptor that runs from Cheney Street all the way down to Gray Plain Avenue. This is a very beginning portion, and this is the amount of the project that can be relined. The rest of the project in segments will be in the capital plan. And much of that will require replacement of that pipe. But this is a relining project. This sewer project, we're waiting final bid specs and it'll be out to bid, and they're hoping to do that work next summer as well.
What's relining is?
Relining. It's instead of taking the pipe out and putting in a new pipe, there's a system in which a material can be injected into the pipe and goes through and it will essentially reline it. So if the integrity of the pipe is good enough, the relining can keep any infiltration from coming in from the from stormwater. And then we don't have to send it to Deer Island to treat water that's generally clean. More on that. And then the final piece of the Walker Pond Phase Two, we're bidding this winter, which is mostly chemical treatment of the pond and hope to get that chemical treatment work done next summer as well. So there's a lot of public works projects here, and there are a lot of other public works projects on their plate. So you'll be hearing a lot of updates from the director over the next few months. So that is, we're not actually looking for any action for the board tonight, just giving you an update on on where we are.
Is there a deadline to use this?
The the state money has to be used by December thirty one to twenty four. The county money, if it's construction, the portion of it that's construction, if there's a contract in place, can be used until twenty twenty six. Other than workload, which we're hoping to get these projects, they're important and get done so we can move on to other projects. There are uncertainties in the federal government as to whether different administrations may pull back funds that haven't been spent. So we're mindful of that, having happened in the past with some programs. So we want to make sure that we spend our money so that it can't be clawed back by any anyone.
Any other questions?
Kate, I appreciate that that you tried to put uncommitted balance in here. And I'm still confused by these columns.
Okay.
Because in in many cases, unexpended and uncommitted are the same number so that it's showing an uncommitted balance of five million, three hundred and eighty three thousand, blah, blah, blah. I don't think we currently have five million, three hundred and eighty three thousand that are really uncommitted. I think I think we have big chunks of that earmarked for things like the two point nine four million for the one twenty eight sewer interceptor project or two point oh one seven million for the town reservoir cleanup. So those are two very large numbers that show up as both unexpended and uncommitted. To me, those are unexpended and uncommitted mean different things.
Yes, and legally I cannot encumber the funds until we have the contract in place. So in the next couple of months, when we have the contracts, we can encumber them, but we can't encumber them until we have the contract. So they are, you know, at they are the budgeted, they are unexpended, but they are not currently encumbered. So they will be encumbered as soon as we sign those contracts.
Okay, so I was trying to figure out if something is unexpended but has an earmark and if something's encumbered, is there still a delta that is not?
It's very small.
For something.
It's very small.
That's what I was hoping would show in this uncommitted balance. So this uncommitted balance line is still not useful to me because I can't tell what that is.
Okay.
So that's that's my feedback.
It's basically some funding in economic development. So unless we have any turnbacks in salary encumbered for Health and Human Services. But at the next update, I will create, I will give you the number. It may not be on the chart, but you'll have the number.
Get there eventually.
And if, you know, if we have contracts signed by then, there really is very little float here. Yeah.
All right, because that's as you're reading across the columns, you're like, huh, we have the same number in several places. And some are slightly different, but.
The the place where we have real money that we're still deciding, I would say, is economic development. And potentially, that's loose gate, being able to reallocate that for additional stormwater.
Okay, all right.
We'll see where we are next time.
Yep.
And just one other item I wanted to report. We've been in very close contact with the EverSource team with respect to Prince Street. They've been out there. They were out there last week with a number of state and local and insurance professionals. EverSource has been in every home on Prince Street, I think in some cases more than once. They've been back to talk to people. They report that the neighborhood has been very accommodating and and helpful to them. They are assisting the homeowner, the homeowner and the renter who were involved in there. Much of that is between those parties, so we don't know, but I do know that that is occurring. They are, they were out in the neighborhood today handing out information and talking to folks. There are three services that they're still trying to convert on Prince Street. And the neighbors, those three homes still want to go forward. And so they're hoping to get that done. They're going to start tomorrow, finish, finish that work this week. This little bit of heightened sensitivity and they want to, you know, just get out of there and clean up. Hopefully, by the end of November, the very beginning of December, they'll be completely done. But they do, they do expect to start tomorrow in one to two weeks, they should be done in out of Prince Street. So continue to follow that. I I do know that the Director of Gas Construction, who signed the letter, his name is Michael Needham. So that was kind of an interesting tidbit, but our our community relations representative calls us with great regularity. So he's he's very much wants the board to know that they're really taking their responsibility very serious.
And we thank Joe for our films and that was early morning call.
Yeah, it was. That's right. Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Good. Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Any anything else? No?
No, I think we're up again on your first board item, I think.
All right, so we're up to the agenda item of the Select Board goal related to Indigenous Peoples' Day.
So yes, the board adopted a goal to, I believe we have the exact goal, Miles, in the back sheet. Which goal is it? Goal, Goal One Initiative Six, to hold a public hearing and determine if the town will change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. We have scheduled a hearing if the board wishes to go forward. We would be scheduling it starting tomorrow for November twenty eighth. And we've done some research, I should say, Miles has done some research, on what peer communities have done. And we have basically given three options for the board to consider. And we would propose to include those in the notice of hearing or a tweak, whatever the board wants to include. So Miles, you want to talk a little bit about the research that you did do?
Research covered twenty pure communities from a list of communities that we look through for any number of things from liquor licenses to any other policy that this board's really looked at. And as you are all aware, many communities have been having this discussion over the past several years. And ultimately, trying to boil down on how to strike a balance between recognizing both the contributions of Italian Americans and American in America and our communities with a contemporary understanding of Columbus's true impact on indigenous people in America. And each community, as as they do, has approached this discussion in its own unique way. Every community, each of the three fifty one is unique. And many, many communities have chosen to simply swap, going from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. As the memo notes, there's nine of the twenty communities that we looked at to include our neighbors in Wellesley and in Newton. And others have chosen to keep Columbus Day, whether that be active act after active deliberation, after choosing to not discuss it, or to await the state on changing their observance. Right now, the Commonwealth observes Columbus Day. I know the state legislature is actively debating that. One of the communities that has not changed is our neighbor in Dedham. And some have chosen to have some sort of combination, maybe observing both on the same day. For example, our neighbor in Westwood. Others have chosen to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day as well as Italian American Heritage Month, which is something that Salem has done. Ultimately, it is up to the community. It is up to the board how we wish to do it. A lot of different communities done it a lot of different ways. Ultimately, trying to achieve consensus and appropriate recognition of our community and its various backgrounds.
We have, Miles and I have compiled a list of if the board wants to go forward with the hearing of groups that we would want to make sure have noticed, you know, the Noiri, the H R C, the Knights of Columbus, the History Center.
The Native praying.
The Native praying Indians, all the boards and committees. Anybody else you can think of, but.
And one other note that's mentioned in the memo, by the way, is just a workload impact if a change were to be made. It's primarily in terms of personnel policies and labor agreements. The labor agreements, to my knowledge, would not have to be immediately corrected. It would be corrected upon or amended upon the next amendment to or renegotiation. And this would, of course, only apply to the Select Board and the town government areas that are under Select Board. Statistician would not include the schools.
And the schools already made the change.
Yeah, schools already made the change.
Yep.
Already done. So thoughts from the board? What do people think? Is this something that we want to open up for a public hearing at this time? To see what members of the public think? I don't, I don't have a conclusion necessarily, so.
Yeah, I would love to hear. And get input, see where people want to take.
Kathy?
Yeah, I I think we should. I mean, I think, given that the schools already have, and that was initiated by students, I would like to emphasize that I think we should have this discussion. Absolutely.
And I think it makes sense to have so many different boards, committees and groups a part of the conversation on the twenty eighth and just listening to different perspectives. I think that is why we listen to understand people, because so many people are going to come this with so many different angles. And, you know, we may not agree with everything or everybody that we listen to, but I think to give them the room to speak their opinions, their values and why changing it or not changing is important to them. I think that is the process that we owe the town to have that. So I'm excited that this is on the agenda. I'm looking forward to listening to people kind of talk about just all the different things from Indigenous Peoples' Day to or Columbus Day or why it's important to them, but ultimately come into a decision that, you know, moving forward with our town with that information and where we go from there, it's just going to be critical. And the schools, I know, have already, you know, moved in that direction to have Indigenous Peoples' Day be recognized. So I would like to see what the consensus may be or, you know, how we talk about it as a group and listening to others. I think that's the most important thing. So.
Okay. Miles, thank you for the research. It's helpful to know sort of what the landscape is around. But it sounds like we are ready to advertise.
A quick Miles work preview, you mentioned the flag protocol, having that on the discussion on the twenty eighth. Miles has drafted a flag policy for your consideration.
Have all that done already? Is this like all done already because you're getting ready to?
Yes.
Miles gets to go on vacation.
Gets to go on vacation. It's a good thing. And so he's been working ahead. I'm glad we haven't disrupted any of those plans then. The next item on our agenda is the Climate Action Plan. So what I, what I wanted to share here is there is a draft letter from the Select Board. There's a placeholder in the Climate Action Plan for a letter from the Select Board. If we are to have a letter that goes forward, then it was important to me that everybody see it. And and so I'm going to say to you, if you have something significant that you think is not in that letter or something that you think I have misstated, then now is the opportunity to speak to that. Otherwise, what I would like to do is just sort of get a general approval from this group. And if there's something people want changed, the authorization that you're authorizing me to do it on behalf of the board so that we can submit it for the plan in support of it.
No.
I just fixed the order of the names. I'll take care of it.
I do have a question.
Yes.
As was mentioned many times at town meeting, there was a resolution some time ago for the, in which the town meeting asked the Select Board to declare a climate emergency, which I think is a posture that we've adopted, but not an action that we've actually taken. And I I recognize that some some were concerned that this might be a step too far, but I wonder if it's something that we want to revisit and discuss.
So if you want to do that, I don't think it's going in this letter because this letter needs to go now. And that is a longer conversation than five minutes at the end of a meeting. That's what I would say.
Well, that's fine. It doesn't necessarily have to impact the letter. But given the conversation, seems like an appropriate time to figure that out. So if that's something that we want to put on a future agenda to have a discussion about, we could do that. Marcus?
I was just listening. I didn't know if you were done. Yeah, I was listening.
I wasn't sure if you were.
Oh, yeah. So I was listening with intention, but I think with intention to jump in and just listening to what Heidi's saying and listening to you, Mary Ann, as well. But, you know, that resolution or that, what they were asking us to do and realizing where we are now and listening to, you know, what the Climate Action Committee has done and where we're going. I feel like we are, you know, trying to do what we can to make sure that we are as ahead of this as we can. And we're still behind as far as where we can be from a climate perspective. And the, it may not go on this, this specific letter. And this letter seems like it can't wait is like for us to have this conversation. I just want to understand.
So my goal from tonight was to come away with a general consensus and that if there was something we want to change, that I would go rework it so that we could hand it off to go into the draft document when that's published for the town.
Okay, so between now and then, there's still time to change that if we have a conversation? Is that what you're saying? Or no?
She's going to take this away. She's going to take this away now, and I personally think it's a wonderful letter. It brought up for me that I think that there is one step that we haven't taken. I'm going to discuss that at a later date.
Okay.
But I I think the letter is great.
Okay, I'm understanding what you're saying now. Okay, but yeah, at a later date, I feel like that would be something that we should definitely entertain and discuss and kind of deep dive. But I think the letter as is, if that's what we're sending out, that's phenomenal, you know, letter. And I think it's one that kind of states how we feel as a board and the direction that we want to head and what we kind of want to do to get there. So just thankful for the Climate Action Committee and everybody that's kind of worked on putting this at the forefront of Needham and where we want to be and where we want to go as a town.
And I'm grateful to a draft that came to us that we were able to massage a little bit. Kate, I'm looking that I can see that paragraph one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph down that starts with one result of the town meeting resolution. We talked about tweaking that language just a little bit. So that is one thing that I do want to just tweak a smidge because we actually already had it in our goals that we were going to create that. So definitely town meeting reinforced it, but that was something that the board had on the list. So.
On that same paragraph, I think that, I think the terms of widow, the last line is a lone word, plan. It should be pulled back. It's just a, it's a topography thing.
I'm going to full justify it anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Nerving out on.
As you wish. I hope somebody's doing that for the whole document, so.
Right, I'm certain it is.
This was just a draft of a letter and it ended up wherever it ended up. But yes, thank you.
We spend time in time fixing one word.
We can't have any widows in our letter, that's for sure. All right. So if the census then that we can go forward, we'll finish this. We do want to participate and have a letter from the board in that document. All right. So if the census then that we can go forward, we'll finish this. We do want to participate and have a letter from the board in that document as it goes to the town. That's our commitment.
Done.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Committee reports.
Oh, do we need a vote for the letter?
I don't need a vote. Should I?
Yes, yeah, right.
Yeah.
So I would welcome a motion.
All right, ma'am chair, make a motion that the select board vote to approve the draft introductory letter for inclusion in the Climate Action Plan.
Second.
With such tweaks as the chair.
Required, yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Thank you. All right, that brings us to committee reports. We had a few things going on, including a very major.
We had such a great housing Needham Advisory Community Forum. There, there were just tons of people. It was great. We had over two hundred or nearly two hundred registrations for the online portion. And I actually don't know if we got a count of the folks in the room, but the room was full. Like we had, yeah, we had to put out extra chairs, about a hundred and fifty, Katie was saying. A lot of people in the crowd pulled their postcards out of their pockets to show me at the station that I was manning. It was, it was really well done. And so the publicity was well done. Thank you so much to the staffs and, and our consultants did a fantastic job managing what could have been like a really cumbersome presentation. And thank you most of all to the community members who came out. There were lots of great questions all night long. I think we're, we, we have a meeting, the committee has a public meeting at which there will not be comment, public comment. That is tomorrow night, but we will be discussing the feedback from the meeting. And I would invite folks who are interested or who attended the meeting to watch that, to see sort of how that feedback is translated and how we decide to move forward based on that feedback. A reminder that all of the materials from the evening are online. And the Needham Channel was able to rescue a recording of the event that didn't include the horrible feedback that we heard in the room for the, just the briefest time in the beginning. So the online, that's already online on their website, the Needham Channel website. But all of the materials from the meeting, including the results from the polls and the stations, will be available on our website, the town website. In addition, if you still have comments either from the meeting last week or just moving forward, you want to make comments, we're still, we're taking comments at planning, planning at Needham, NeedhamMA.gov. I'll remind everyone that the next opportunity, you don't want to miss it. It's a very, very fancy and, and well-attended event. You don't want to miss it. Will be January eighteenth. So we presume we will have some maps to, some starting maps to share and we do understand that people are really interested in having some public comments, so we're going to work that into our schedule somehow as well. So just a reminder, if you go to the Needham Town website, you want to scroll down to the bottom of the page, there's an MBTA Communities button. And that's where you're going to find all the information. So it was a great, great event. Very happy with it.
It turned out, I think extraordinarily well. And a tribute to everybody with all the work to advertise it and to get people to come out. And I do hope people will continue to come out as this evolves in January and in March. As Heidi mentioned, people, there were some folks who were there who wished to have public comment that night. That night was actually dedicated sort of to education and to getting to people to think about what the levers were that the town had and, and how they considered the lot coverage and the number of stories and the density of units.
Yeah, we had mechanisms for feedback, but that mechanism does not.
Was, right. So, but people are always welcome to give feedback and, and that is available and we will have more discussion next time. So thank you. Other committees.
Kathy? Yeah, so I have two things to report. So the first was the inaugural meeting of the TCHOC Committee, which is the town-financed Community Housing Oversight Committee.
It's going to be everybody's favorite acronym.
And the point of this committee is that because town meeting has voted funds to help rebuild the Needham Housing Authority and because those funds will be used to attract much larger funds from the state and the federal government, but we still, it's, it's not a traditional way that we spend money for building where we're directly doing it ourselves. It is a third party. So this is a committee to oversee that with the idea that we hope that this works well, very well, and that we can continue this model perhaps when we have the Stephen Palmer, perhaps the, the Housing Trust might take something on so that this would be an important model. So we had our first inaugural meeting and we've got a great group of people with a lot of expertise and various angles on this. And we have a next meeting coming up where we're going to hear from the Housing Authority. And then we're also going to get a primer on how these types of finance or financing schemes work, which is pretty complicated for public housing. So that's, that's going well. My second update.
Before you move to your second committee, I will just mention at the planning board meeting last week, the Housing Authority came before the planning board. They are planning a public hearing for December sixth on the Housing Authority plan. So I just mentioned that if people want to just put a note on their calendar for that date.
Yeah, so the second one is not really a committee, but I did help the Broadmeadow Brownies to earn their democracy badge on Sunday, which was lovely. Really enjoyed that. But I wanted to share that they, they had ideas for the town. So I want to share those with you because they were advocating to me their ideas. And so their ideas as follows. One, add more trash cans and recycling bins to outside areas, especially playgrounds, parks. Two, and this one, I have to say, generated a lot of enthusiasm and discussion. More bathrooms at sports fields and parks. Lot of discussion from the Brownies. Along with the trash cans, they would like composting options. And they would like a crosswalk and a traffic light to go to Broadmeadow School. So I will say they were very engaged.
Across.
Broadmeadow or Bird?
Well, I think it would be Broadmeadow. Yeah. Very engaged. They really.
A crossing guard there, right?
Right, no, no, but they, 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 they mentioned that. They said, we know we have a, these are second graders. I just wanted to set the table here. And they were very articulate. They said, we know we have a crossing guard, but the crossing guard is not always there. Like if we're going to the playground later, other times. And so, yes, they have a crossing guard. They're aware. They would still like.
Very good points.
A crosswalk.
Yeah.
Okay, transmitting what the Brownies would like you all to know.
Thank you for that report.
Broadmeadow Brownies, appreciate it.
Kathy did not say, but she's been very busy because she was actually at the Minuteman Subcommittee, the Study Committee with me last night, which meets twice a year. Last night was the night of our fall meeting. We did take and review current enrollment. It's very interesting. So the new school has been open now. I don't know, is it really four years? It's probably about four years. Four years ago, so our current senior class at Minuteman has eight students from Needham Minute. The just admitted first year freshman class has seventeen students in it. So more than doubled. We will be allocated sixteen or seventeen places again next year if we were to have a similar number of students wishing to go next year. We've actually had increasing numbers every year. But they are actually at the point where they will be getting close to capacity in the school. They're very close now.
Over the last ten years, we're up over a hundred percent.
In Needham?
Yeah, Needham, Needham enrollment. It's now forty-six and it was under, it was in the low twenties and ten years.
I was going to say, I thought at one point we were at like nineteen or eighteen. I thought we.
Just this ten-year period, it was in the early, it was low twenties.
Yeah, I guess I've been going to these meetings for a long time. Very long time. I think I started on the school committee, on this committee, so. But at any rate, it was a good session. They have gone, as you know, through a change in superintendent. Kevin Mahoney, who had been the finance director, is now the superintendent. And is doing, it looks like a wonderful job and sort of stabilizing everything. And so we appreciate him for the work that he's doing there. Any other committees?
Yes.
You've got one too. We've all been busy.
Got two. Update on the flood meetings right Chestnut Street. And it's interesting to see how the topography plays in a role in what's happening in a lot of these neighborhoods. And then also how it affects basically stormwater, how stormwater moves through it. On a map, everything's flat. But on two properties, they were basically the bottom of the dog bowl. And one person at the, as this dog bowl assessed a funnel away, the builder put his, his basement door, and it actually blew in because of all the water, the force of the water. Another neighbor had, I think she was like twelve feet from conservation land. And in the new construction, there was the, you know, the block of the house, and then the, it was built the addition as part of the new construction. And then they dropped the foundation down. The sill was at eight inches above grade. And all the water came in through her basement windows and destroyed the basement. So we, there was talk, maybe there'll be a stormwater working group. And, but it was sad to see, I mean, these people, they beautiful homes, they love them, but they really were dealt a tough hand. And then the other one was the Steel and Brand Committee. We met, is a great group. We kicked the tires. So it's figured out kind of where we want to go and we'll meet in December.
Excellent. All right.
Could I note, ma'am chair, one item on the consent?
Yes.
As I bring it up because it relates to the arts. So we are very close. We've sent the final rental agreement to allow the Needham Community Theater to use the first floor of the barn. We've been talking about this a long time. Going to bring it to your, for, for authorization at your next meeting. And they had provided us some lumber to help fix the floor and stabilize the floor and building maintenance took everything out. And we've had the building commissioner over and it really is a way that the town has supported the arts. And I just think that it's, I, I love the idea of documenting these kinds of things because the Needham Community Theater has used that barn for longer than I've been here.
I was going to say for decades, yes.
So, so that's great. And it's just a great way that the board is supporting the arts.
Any other business? If there is none. Not sure how we did overall tonight. I'm just going to check. We're now over, of course. Can't stay on all day. So I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
What's?
Only if you would like to adjourn.
Kevin.
Kevin, we don't have to adjourn. We could stay here. Or you could move that we adjourn. Or somebody else could move that we adjourn.
Chair move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Sure, I'll say nay.
All right, it's for one. We are adjourned.